Okay, the hour is four o'clock and we'll call this August 1st, 2023, meeting of the Salina Planning Commission to order. Marty, can you confirm that the Kansas Open Meeting Record postings have been done correctly?
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice was provided.
Thank you. Dean, roll call?
I'm going to call rule for today. Commissioner Seidell?
Here.
Commissioner Alt?
Here.
Commissioner Farber?
Here.
Commissioner Ivy?
Here.
Commissioner Wasserman?
Here.
Commissioner Waters?
Here.
Chair Miccel?
Here.
That gives us an attendance of seven, and that is a quorum. And we've provided advanced notice of today's meeting, so that will allow us to move ahead with item 2.1 and the rest of today's agenda.
Very good. I hope we've all had a chance to read the minutes, and if so, if there's any changes or anything needs to happen there, or if there's a motion to approval, I'll take that?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the July 18th, 2023 meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Dean, new business?
New business, we have an advertised public carrying item for you today. It's a follow-up item to our discussion about North Ohio Street and particularly the project associated with Beck's Hybrid Seeds. And part of the discussion on that particular item was when you were reviewing that request to allow that area to be part of Beck's corporate campus and to be annexed into the city, we pointed out to the commission that the property was, that was to be the corporate campus site, was designated as a conservation area on the comprehensive plan. And as we noted, the conservation area is identified as flood-prone areas where new development is not necessarily encouraged. So at that hearing, when you were looking at annexation, rezoning, and plating requests submitted by Beck's, you took note of the fact that Beck's engineers had demonstrated it was feasible to extend public utilities from Ohio Street back to that area. And so, in your review, you found that the Beck site was located in the city's urban service area, that based on the plans for the property that you had seen, including the extension of utilities, that you thought an employment area designation was more appropriate than the current conservation area designation. So you voted to recommend approval of a zoning change from agricultural to I-2, subject to satisfactory plating of the property. And so, based on your finding that the current land use map was out of step with what is there in current conditions, you also approved a motion to direct staff to initiate a future land use map amendment to amend the conservation area boundary. And so, what you're seeing up there is based on the 2010 map. And the green area, which you can see is quite extensive up there, is areas that are either deep in the floodplain or in the floodway for Mulberry Creek and the Celine River. And so, we prepared this amendment on your behalf, and we advertised today as the hearing. And so, we identified for you on page four some criteria that you're supposed to look at, and looking at a map change. And so, one of the things that we pointed out to you was that in 1986, the city became part of the National Flood Insurance Program, and we adopted a new set of flood insurance rate maps. And those maps basically showed everything between the flood control levy and I-70 as mapped hundred-year floodplain. And so, in 1994, following that, the Flying J Travel Plaza was annexed into the city. You can see there that there's a finger of non-floodplain near the interchange there. And the city commission, in looking at the Flying J development, authorized a plan to extend water and sanitary service out to this area. And the area kind of corresponds to the boundary there between the blue area, which is floodplain, and the yellow area, which is floodway. So, that was done in 2001. The area that's outlined there was annexed into the city due to the fact that public utilities were now available. So, in 1986, we had 100% of that area was floodplain. And when the comprehensive plan was prepared and adopted in 2010, this was the map that was in effect, so that ward property got designated as conservation area consistent with the flood map. But in 2018, we got new updated flood maps, and much of that area was removed for the floodplain. So you can see on this map, the area where they're proposing to do much of their development is clear. It's not subject to the blue shaded area, and so, it's the, there has been a change in, in conditions. And so, one of the things that the planning commission can take into account in updating the future land use map is a change in conditions. So, we have offered for you on page six and seven, a number of items that we think support changing the land use designation for the ward property from conservation to employment. And that's just based on the development interest we're seeing that could be an economic development benefit to the city. So, your role in this case is to look at what your vision is for the future development of North Ohio and the ward property directly to the west. And so, it's a question of whether you see that ward property as being more closely related to the North Ohio Street corridor, therefore justifying an amendment, or being more closely related to the flood area that's between the flood control levy and I-70. So, on page seven, we've identified some options. Dustin, if you could go back to the future land use map, we could see that a little more clearly. So, one of the things we pointed out in our report was in following Flying J and following the installation of utilities, city staff expected that we would see uses that cater to travelers on I-70 wanting to develop out near Ohio on I-70, and that proved not to be the case. We had Harley-Davidson, which is not really a travel service business. We had the Kenworth Trucks, that's already there, and we had an investment from Foley Equipment Company. And then, we had interest from a utility company in relocating into the Harley-Davidson building. And so, what we have not seen is anything that is consistent with that red commercial designation that's on the future land use map. So, as we look at this this afternoon, your choices are to just reaffirm this map and say, red is for future highway commercial development. We still think that's going to happen. It should stay the way it is. You could recommend that the ward property, which is the green area here, that that be changed from the current conservation to an employment land use area, as you discussed at your last meeting. Or you could look at the entire west side of Ohio, and I don't know if we have the zoning map in there, Dustin, but if we could look at that. One of the things we pointed out is that when that area was shaded red on the comprehensive plan, and we already had this C-7 highway commercial here for Flying J, everyone thought that, well, everything along here would be C-7, and it'll be motels and convenience stores and travel services. And instead, the planning commission has received requests for light industrial, light industrial, and light industrial. And so, the other option would be to amend the map to show all of the west side of North Ohio, including the ward property, as an employment area. So, this comprehensive plan is 13 years old. It's not designed to written, be written in stone. This is an area that was expected to develop commercially, and it hasn't. By our count, there's been five separate properties requested to be rezoned to I-2 in conflict with the current commercial designation. And then, the other factor is that the flood-mapped area just to the west of North Ohio there has been greatly reduced. And so, for those reasons, we think some form of amendment can be justified. It's up to you whether you agree, and to what extent you want to see that changed, whether you want to look at the entire west side of the North Ohio corridor, which would change all that's red there on the map to employment area on the west side, and then also incorporate this as to an employment area. So, with that, staff would be open to any questions that you might have. But the, one of the reasons for the conservation area is, is just to say it's very difficult to develop in the deep floodplain or floodway. The city shouldn't be spending money running utilities out into areas that are flood-prone or not, or difficult to develop. But this is the case of a corridor where the city made a decision to run utilities. Utilities are available. The flood map has been modified. And so, we think it's time to look at this area again, just to see what, what you, your expectations are for what we'll see in this area.
Thank you, Dean. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a question. Looking at, if we are talking about recommending future employment, it says for all of the west side of North Ohio Street. How far south are we talking about? Just that?
Just the portion that's in the city limits. And it, chances are, some of that, it may not happen immediately. But the, where you see the boundary between the conservation area and the red commercial area, we're talking about making that employment area down to where Dustin has his cursor, and then bringing that line straight across onto the Beck's property. So, it would go, instead of being red, it would be an employment area, and that would better reflect the fact that all of those are I-2 type uses.
And we cannot go farther south there because that is not city property, correct?
The reason that the benefit district and the annexation and everything, the, the chances of being able to build anything at all new in that yellow area is really near impossible. And so, we've had, we've kind of had that discussion before with planning commissions on looking at both the Ninth Street and the North Ohio corridors. And the idea that North Ohio or North Ninth Street would be lined with new development extending out to the interstate is just not realistic, because it's a floodway area, and basically, floodway new development is prohibited. And in the floodplain area, you can bring in fill or elevate pads or buildings, but in the floodway area, you can't really do anything. And open space and agriculture is the best use in a floodway. And so, the city has that island there because it's just not realistic
Sure.
to expect anything to go past that line. So, we're, we're focusing on this area coming over to here and here, and, and what that should be.
Perfect. Thank you. And as a practical matter, Dean, future businesses or employers that wanted to, to come into that area, that would, if we changed the designation, that would give them?
That would show people who might, let's throw an example of a distribution center or something that was more light industrial. And so, the, the thought before was, there's really only so many interchanges in Salina, Kansas, and there's only two on I-70, so we need to set aside those areas for businesses that will pull travelers off the interstate. But what we've seen is that there hasn't been any interest from businesses in that area. And we've had interest from Foley and from utility companies and from Beck's Hybrid Seeds and people that fit more into an industrial service mode and not, they're not dependent on interstate travelers. And so, it, the, the plan shows that we're setting that area aside for interstate travel businesses, and it just doesn't seem realistic. We've approved five zoning changes that haven't been consistent with that. And so, when you have that many inconsistencies, it's kind of time to look at your plan and say, maybe it's out of step.
Very good. Dustin, do we have anybody online or anybody in the audience that'd like to address this application?
We do not have anyone online.
Okay. We'd come back to the commission then for discussion, possible action. Any thoughts?
I feel it's justified that we do all of the west side of North Ohio. I know where we were talking about with the ward property before, and that makes complete sense. But I would say at this point, in order to eliminate some of those inconsistencies, I think it is justified. I think it's outlined as number three, as the alternatives there on the page. Any feeling from other commissioners or throw a motion out there?
Yeah.
Well, I will make a motion that we recommend that the future land use map be amended to show all of the west side of North Ohio Street, including the ward property, as future employment instead of future commercial and conservation area.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application M-23-9 with the item number three on the commission alternatives. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
Okay. We have no legislative matters for you this afternoon, but we do have an administrative matter, which is a final plat application. And thought we should, that would be application P-23-5A. It's been filed by Mark Augustine on behalf of the Mark Augustine Trusts, and the request is for approval of a final plat of a four-lot subdivision of property located southwest corner of Waterwell and South Ninth Street. And so, just to give you an overview of where we are, this property was first looked at by the planning commission in February of 2022. And at that time, Mr. Augustine was attempting to purchase the property, and he wanted assurances that he could use it for his intended uses before he completed purchase of the property. So, in February of 2022, the planning commission made two recommendations. One was to recommend that the list of conditional uses in the Ninth Street corridor overlay be expanded to add more uses. And the planning commission also voted to change the zoning of this property from agricultural to planned service commercial. And so, that was in the form of a recommendation. That recommendation went to the city commission in March of 2022, and the city commission approved an ordinance. And we would point out that, at the time, the planning commission recommended that mini warehouses not be added to the list of permitted uses in the corridor overlay. The city commission approved an amendment that added mini warehouses to that list. And the city commission also approved the zoning change for this property on first reading, with second reading held in abance until the property was final platted. So, on June 20th, you reviewed a preliminary plat of this property, and you voted to approve that preliminary plat, subject to a number of conditions that are outlined on page four of your report. And having approved a preliminary plat, the applicant moved forward with a final plat application. And so, the plat layout includes four lots, with one lot being set aside for a convenience store, Travel Plaza, one lot for an RV park, and one lot for a mini storage complex. The center lot, Lot Three, is being set aside as a stormwater retention area. And so, this is a follow-up application to the preliminary to come forward with a final plat. And so, where we are with this is that the applicant retained the services of EBH Engineering. They submitted a subdivision drainage study with the preliminary plat. They also submitted some supplemental information. The plan, as staff understands it, is because of the very, very flat terrain and the lack of a good receiving point, would be to have a retention basin where the water would be held and would percolate into the ground. If the water reached a certain level, it would be released at a controlled rate into South Ninth Street, kind of as a spillway-type design. At the time that we sent our packet out, the city engineer had not approved the drainage study. And part of that reason is because it's being proposed as a retention pond, and it doesn't have an outlet. Additional information was needed about the capacity of the pond, in terms of the width of the pond at the top and the bottom, the cubic foot capacity, and also some information about the soils to determine the percolation rate. Because the percolation works well if you have relatively porous soil. So, I can, we were discussing that earlier yesterday, that if you look at the North Ohio overpass, there were ponds designed on both sides of that. Those ponds were designed to be water features that held water. However, the soil was so porous that they were not retention ponds, because the water would fall there, and then it would soak through the bottom of the pond and not be retained. So, the plan is not to have a body of water that would be retained year-round as a water feature. It would be a dry bottom pond. But nonetheless, the subdivision regulations state that the planning commission shall not approve any plat which does not make adequate provisions for stormwater control. And so, it says the city engineer shall inform the planning commission in writing of the effects of the proposed subdivision on the existing storm drainage system. Our city engineer has indicated that he's not in a position to do that, and we did not receive any subsequent information between the time the packet went out and today's meeting. So, our, our recommendation would be to postpone consideration to a future meeting date to allow the applicant's design engineer to obtain a letter from the city engineer approving their drainage study and their retention pond design plans. We did note that if that information was provided to the satisfaction of the city engineer prior to or at today's meeting, we might modify that recommendation, but we have not received anything new or supplemental. And so, that's, that's our recommendation. It would seem reasonable that the postponement could be for two weeks to the August 15th meeting. Mr. Augustine has an application that his architect has submitted for the first phase of development, which is on Lot Four, the south lot. And that has to come before the planning commission for review of that site plan, and that is currently scheduled to be considered on the 15th of August. So, if, if that was what the commission thought, and the applicant thought was an appropriate postponement date, then we think that's doable.
Dean, in the past, we've done items where we've left it up to the staff to work out some of the details with the applicant. Are you guys comfortable doing something like that in this instance, or is this a bigger?
We are not comfortable with that, because the, the reason, the reason for that and the requirement, and how it relates to the plat, is if that area set aside there is Lot Three, no one on staff at this point can tell you whether that is large enough to accommodate the size of pond needed to handle back-to-back storms. So, that, that is subject to change. And since it's subject to change, staff can't approve that change. Only you can approve that change. And so, it didn't seem to be, it seemed to be counterproductive, since we can't tell you that the dimensions and everything on Lot Three will accommodate the detention pond design. That is why we're recommending postponement. And because the dimensions are in question, and the size is in question, and it could be subject to change, that's not a change that can be approved administratively. And then, we'd have to bring it back to you to approve the change, and that just didn't seem productive.
Okay, got it. Would, any questions of staff on, on that? Mr. Augustine, would you like to address the commission?
Yeah, I have questions.
Okay.
I guess it's the first I heard that our drainage study wasn't approved, disappointingly. I know Dean had communicated with me that, that he was missing some material which we provided, which I thought completed the application. But who is reviewing that? Is that Wayne, or is that Mr. Johnson?
Wayne Nelson is the one that has been reviewing that, but he has received no direct information or correspondence from Mr. Crochell, the engineer, so he doesn't have anything new or different to communicate.
So, do you know exactly what it is that he is missing?
Yes, I'd be happy. I thought you were copied in on that email. If you were not, then I'll forward that to you.
Okay.
So, I sent an email to Mr. Crochell, and pointing out to him the things that we're still lacking in order to get a letter from the city engineer.
I was copied on that, but I thought he had provided that information. But one point of clarification, is this, is the city engineer looking for that retention to eventually drain, or are we looking at two 25-year storms, or what is the criteria? I guess I'm, I'm not clear on that.
The, the things that we're looking for that we do not have is that we've requested capacity calculations to show that it would accommodate two back-to-back 25-year storm events, but also information about the bottom and top dimensions of the pond design, because we don't know, not having any pond design, we don't know whether the pond design will fit within the drainage easement that's set aside. And that's, that's one of the most fundamental things about a subdivision plat, is that you don't want to plat a drainage easement, or you don't want to plat an area set aside for detention and have fixed boundaries, and then it's not big enough to accommodate what needs to fit in it. And so, Mr. Nelson has requested some information about the soils to determine if the, if the bottom of the pond bottom of the pond will, what the percolation rate will be. He's requested information about the dimensions of the pond design and information about the capacity to accommodate two back-to-back storms without any kind of discharge.
Okay. Well, we'll have to complete that information to Mr. Nelson then.
Is that, are you comfortable with that, to the next meeting?
Well, I'm trying to get, you know, something going out there, but at the same time, we need to make sure that it doesn't flood, and appreciate the fact that they're looking at it with, you know, and the detail that they, that we need, because the last thing I want to do is have it flood. So we'll work through that with city staff and get you the information that you need so that they can make a recommendation, so.
Thank you. And Dustin, do we have anybody online in regards to this application?
We do not have anyone online to comment on this particular item.
Okay, I guess I would entertain a motion to postpone this meeting to the, what would that be, the 15th? August 15th?
So move.
In a second. Moved in a second to move this application P-23-5A to the August 15th meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Okay. We are down to unfinished business or other business.
We do have another business item for you that we wanted to discuss, and I'm going to have Dustin set one of these at each of your places, and then I'm going to have Spencer place a follow-up item there. But at your last meeting, you made a recommendation regarding a zoning text amendment for amending our provisions dealing with group daycare homes. And we've had a learning lesson as a staff and as it relates to the state statutes.
Thank you.
And as a staff, we got a little overzealous to move forward, and we didn't do things like we have customarily done in the past. But there is, in Kansas, we have what's called the Planning and Zoning Enabling Act. And under the Kansas Zoning Enabling Act, there's three parties who can file an application to amend the zoning ordinance. One of that is the City Commission can initiate it. One, and the most common, is the Planning Commission can initiate it, and then a property owner can initiate it if there is something specific on it that affects a specific piece of property. So, Mr. Augustine has left, but I can pick on him. He had a property on West Crawford, and he wished to have it within that property to add a retail liquor store. And the zoning district that he was zoned did not allow retail liquor stores. So he filed an application to amend the ordinance to add that as a use that applied specifically to his property. So that is the third item. So we worked with a group that's working on local daycare issues, including the Salina United Way, and it came to our attention belatedly that they're not property owners, and they're not the Planning Commission and the City Commission, and we just got a little ahead of ourselves. So what has generally happened is that we bring an issue like that to you as a preliminary discussion item that would be on your agenda, and you can see that here. Then we kind of give you the picture on that and say, is that something you'd be interested in having staff work on? And we skip that step. So, we need to go back to that step. And I was, I was trying to explain, instinctively, it says, well, why shouldn't Salina United Way be able to, well, the purpose of the statute in limiting who to do that is because we don't, indirectly, staff works for you. You kind of set our priorities about what you would like us giving focus to, and you wouldn't want a situation where a citizen can walk in and say, here's 12 zoning amendments to the zoning code I want you planners to work on. Well, none of those things may be of any interest or priority to the Planning Commission. So, what we do in a case like that, and should have done, except we were in too big a hurry here, was bring it to the commission. Here's an issue that we're seeing in the community. Here's some interested parties. Is this something that you would want us to work on? And then you make a motion directing us to move forward on that. We skipped that step with the group daycare homes. So what we have in front of you is just kind of a scripted item, and so, in your, in the bylaws and in the meeting procedures, under other business, any, the City Commission or any other board can add something to their agenda that's not on the agenda. So we've kind of written a script out there so that if a member is so inclined, they can make a motion to add discussion of that to today's agenda, even though it's not on your written agenda. And if there's a second to that and an affirmative vote, then we can, we can have that as an agenda item to discuss and ask questions about.
Okay. So, that being said, would anyone like to make this motion?
Are we supposed to follow this script?
Yes.
So if you're so inclined, then the order of business is to follow that script.
Yeah. No screen tests or tryouts necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we add discussion of a potential group daycare home text amendment to today's meeting agenda.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Would this not be better suited to put on our next agenda so that the public would be able to have input on this?
Well, what, what you're allowing us to do is initiate the text amendment so we can provide public notice of it being on a future agenda.
Fair enough. Thank you.
And good point. So is there a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. Moved in a seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
So, we've kind of given you our explanation. You have discussed this. We've provided you with information. We have a second handout up there. What we have in the handout is what we would propose to prepare as an application that you would sponsor or initiate. It's identical to what was discussed before, and what's in there is identical. The difference is, is that you, as a planning commission, would be initiating and filing that, and then, once that is filed, then we would put it on a schedule and provide public notice, and there would be a public hearing to receive public comment at a future date, which is most likely to be September the 5th.
Dean, I have a question. Do we need to do anything to clean up the action that we already took? Do we need to rescind that or anything?
Uh-uh.
All right.
This, this takes care of that. It's, it's basically turning what you did into a discussion of the item that we would normally have had. And so, this, this just, this just allows your recommendation to, because it's been initiated, recommendation on it, that allows it to go forward to the City Commission, and adding things to the agenda that aren't on the agenda is something that would seldom be done, but there are provisions for it, because it, things like this do happen.
Well, I'm happy you found this, and I'm glad we're moving ahead the right way. Would anyone like to make a motion and read the second part of this script?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize staff to initiate and file a zoning text amendment that would make group daycare homes permitted home occupation instead of a conditional use in residential zoning districts, and to update the city's zoning ordinance definitions to make them current with state regulations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in a seconded to approve the filing of a zoning text amendment for group daycare homes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
So what we will do is that we will take that application that you have at your place there, you having authorized us to, to work on this and make it a priority. We will move that forward. We will notify all the interested parties that we've been working with of the hearing date, and there will be a hearing, a public hearing on that text amendment as presented to allow you to get feedback, public feedback, and to allow you to ask questions, just as you did before.
Very good. Thank you.
But this is not, this is not bypassing anything. It's just to make sure that we're following the protocol that the state law has set out. And again, the reason for that is, is to have, have the City Commission or Planning Commission serve as a vetting party to say, yeah, we want you focused on, we think this is an issue, and we'd like you to work on it, as opposed to having people come in and just drop things off at a desk and say, please work on this, so.
Very good. Okay, public forum. See, we don't have anybody in the audience. Anybody online, Dustin?
We do not have anyone online at the moment for public forum.
Any commissioners have any items they'd like to talk about? I'd like to say, I didn't catch it at the last meeting, but apparently that was Commissioner Olson's last.
Yes. Commissioner Olson submitted his, he has, I believe, one more year on his term, so he indicated that he didn't foresee his attendance being reliable and that he would be a good member, so he submitted his resignation as of August 1st. So we're now back to seven members instead of eight, so.
Well, I'd like to formally recognize his participation, his good input to this group, and thank him for his service. Okay. That being said, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. We are adjourned.